Yes. Okay, good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session, September 7th, 2023. Who would please stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Our Father God, we come once again to give you thanks and praise. Thank you for your many, many blessings. We continue to ask your guidance and direction. These blessings we ask in your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I figured we couldn't have enough prayers though. We couldn't leave that off. Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
All right, item three, citizens address the board. Okay, no one. All right. Number four is approval of our work session agenda. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Hewitt, second.
Second.
By Ms. McDonald. All those in favor? Motion carries four zero. All right, number five, Dr. Williams.
All right, tonight we are going to hear from our schools. All right, Todd Grant Elementary with our new principal who got off to a good start on Tuesday. And before they start, I'll say welcome to Ms. Rawls who's here as our curriculum leader.
I see you stuck around a few days, so it's not so bad, huh?
She hasn't left yet. All right, Mr. Mitchell, it's all yours.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're here to present some great data from Todd Grant Elementary. But before we begin, there are two things that I just really want to highlight. This year, we were recognized at Gail as an advancing achievement school. We got off the promise school list, which means our test scores went up. We reached our 3% goal. And we were also recognized as a visible learning associate school for implementing visible learning with integrity and demonstrating exemplary practices in developing visible learners. And we will also be recognized at the GACES Conference in the fall as a visible learning school. So those are two great things that happened this year. And it was a collective effort, and we could not have done it without the skillful leadership of Ms. Sangeraw. We miss her already. There was not a honeymoon period. They threw me right in and we were running.
They started about 6:30 that morning.
6:30, yes, with all the texts. All right, our first slide we're gonna look at, and we're gonna go through this briefly. We know you guys have seen this already. Our third grade ELA comparison between 2022 and 2023. If you look at our beginning, developing, proficient, and distinguished students, they are moving in the right direction. We had more kids actually moving to developing and proficient and distinguished. And in 2022, we had 95 total students tested, and then in 2023, we had 91 students tested. And this page, we just talk about the glows and the grows. We did, our percentage rates were higher than the RISA in the state in ELA. Our reading status was at a 71% of students that were scored at grade level or above. An area that they did very well in was vocabulary acquisition and usage, reading informational texts. The area on extended writing where they gained three points for language uses and conventions, they did very well in that. And only 13 out of 91 student responses were not graded at all because they were blank copied or off topic. Some grows, some areas that we know that we need to grow in was key ideas and details, reading literary texts, extended writing, and that was the four points in developing ideas, organization, and coherence. And normally, the reading informational is harder, but our students did pretty good in that area. And but our students struggle with leading, reading literary texts, and we believe that it has to do with making inferences. And that's just me reading between the lines. And Ms. Morris is gonna come later with our plan on how to fix that. All right, our fourth grade ELA comparison, again, it's just looking at the beginning, developing, proficient, and distinguished. You can see that in 2022, we had 95 total students tested. 2023, we had 92. Again, we're moving in the right direction. The numbers are actually going to the right. And we had a lot of students in developing and proficient. For fourth grade ELA, some grows, again, we, our percentages, we scored higher than the RISA for the area. The areas where the kids did well was craft and structure, the integration of knowledge and ideas, the reading informational texts, the reading literary, read literary texts, extended writing, again, that's the three points. And only 10 out of 104 student responses were not scored, which means it was blank copied, off topic, or too limited. The grows, our reading status, we only had 52% of our students were at grade level or above. And they're our current fifth grade students this year. And we did note that in kindergarten, these were the students that went out for COVID. So we're actually looking for what needs to close these gaps. Another area was key idea and details that they need some work in. And reading informational texts, and the reading literary texts this time in fifth grade, um, fourth grade, it was like 50/50, so we put it on the glows and the grows. And again, the extended writing tasks, ideas development, organization, organization and coherence for the four points. We are actually working on our writing this year as well in small groups. All right, fifth grade. The ELA comparison, in 2022, we tested 86 kids, 2023, 93 kids. We did have more kids that we tested last year. But once again, we are moving more kids in the developing and proficient area. So we're moving in the right area. Fifth grade ELA, the glows, we scored higher than our area RISA. Our reading status, we had 70% of our students that were, that scored on grade level or above, and we were real proud of that. Again, vocabulary acquisition and use, reading informational texts, those were areas that they did well in. Even in the extended writing, they, all of our students got their three points. And only four out of 93 students' responses in fifth grade were not scored because they were blank copied or off topic. So we thought that was great as well.
A lot of them in previous years were copied. That's what the majority of our kids, they would just copy sentences word for word over there. So I think that's a very good glow for us at this moment.
Yes. Grows, and we note again, in 2019, these were the first graders who went out for COVID. Craft and structure, integration of knowledge and ideas, reading literary texts, and again, that's making inferences, and the extended writing tasks, developing ideas, organizing their writing, and writing coherently, the four points. All right, the ELA content mastery, and if you look in 2019, our overall average percentage was a 45.74. In 2022, we went up to a 54.73. We wanted to have a 3% increase, that's what the state determines, and that's where we would have been at 56.37, but we ended up at a 59.73. So we exceeded the 3% goal. Now midpoint, the midpoint, when they take the test, each kid get a lexile. But they have a midpoint, like in third grade, the, the grade level text span is from a 520 to a 830. So the midpoint of third grade would be a 670. So we're looking at the midpoint of third, fourth, and fifth grade. In 2019, 35% of our kids reached that midpoint. In 2022, we had 43.56%, and last year, we had 45.13% reach the midpoint. So we're constantly growing, and that's what we like to see. All right, math. So we talked about ELA, and this is the math portion. The total number of students tested in 2022 was 95. 2023, there were 92 students. As you can see, we're moving students to proficient and distinguished, more so than beginning and developing. In third grade, we kind of did this a little different. We ranked the domains in the order from the highest percentage to the lowest. Our kids did very well, their operations and algebraic thinking. The next domain that they did pretty good on was numbers and operation. Measurement and data, and geometry, they have some struggles in, and we also noticed that this is the area that comes towards the end of the year. And when we look at the pacing guide, the bulk of the test comes from operation and algebraic thinking, numbers and operations. So that's where they spent most of their time, so we could get more bang for our buck.
And also, when we went out in COVID, that was the unit that, because the way it was set up on the pacing guide, that was our last measurement of data and geometry was the last unit to be taught. And so when we went out in March, they didn't receive that. So that's, we've seen that consistently since then, that that's been an issue. So we have tried to sit away until the very end to try to piece it in as much as possible where we can.
And also this year, we started doing, we went back to the old school plan, doing calendar time for math, so that they're getting that calendar time in daily, so that it's not waiting until the very end.
Yes. All right, fourth grade math comparison. Again, you can see the students are moving from developing to proficient and distinguished. Our fourth grade did pretty good this year. We had more level fours this year. And we really, really celebrated our teachers for their hard work that they're doing in Eureka Math. In fourth grade, the kids did very well in numbers and operations in base 10, numbers and operations in fractions. The third area where they did well was operations and algebraic thinking. And again, the last two areas was geometry, measurement, and data. And you, that is consistent across all three grade levels. In the fifth grade math, looking at this data, it is an area where we will focus heavily on this year. Last year, fifth grade piloted Eureka Square, and they went through some training. This year, we had some training at the beginning with Matt Thompson. We had two, two of the teachers from the grade level to actually go through. So when we look at our rollout, they can look at the standards that they need to teach so that we can see an improvement in, in our math. If you look, 2022 and 2023, we stayed about the same in those areas. But this year, we already met with our teachers, and we have a plan, and Ms. Morris will go into that more in a minute. Fifth grade math, again, the highest area was operations and algebraic thinking, numbers in base 10, followed by measurement and data, geometry. And then the numbers and operations and fractions, they didn't do well on that. But that's the area that we're focusing on heavily this year.
That, that's a lot of the questions on the milestone has to do with the fractions, and that was one of the weakest areas. So we had talked with the teachers and made sure that we're, we're hitting that more so this year than we did last year.
All right, the math content mastery, if you look at this, our achievement rate in 2019 was a 51.43. The achievement rate in 2022 was a 55.47. We needed to hit that 3% increase and, which was 57.13, and we scored a 57.41. So we did hit our mark, just a little over, but this year, we're gonna be working real hard so that we can exceed that.
Or is better.
Yes. Our content mastery, every year, at the beginning of the year, we do our screeners at the beginning, middle, and end. And we do the map, and it gives a, a projection of what the kids will do on the GMASS. So if we look at the correlation, it was real close between MAP and GMASS. And when we look at the writing, if you look at level one, you can see that it's, they said that we would have less level ones than we actually had. And that's because MAP doesn't have the writing component. So we have to go back and actually do that.
So in ELA, our MAP data always looks better than our GMASS data, usually because of that, because they don't have that writing base.
Then if you look at math, the correlation between MAP and GMASS was pretty spot on. It was real close. So we, every time we take the screener, we actually look at it, we monitor it in our workbook. So we look at areas that we need to attack before we actually take the test, and we come up with a plan for that. Now, this time, Ms. Morris is gonna talk to you about what we plan on doing to hit those areas.
In ELA, in the lower grades, we're having more direct instruction on foundational skills, being more intentional. And we are actually going through letters training. We're, the first cohort, we're ending our first year at, in December. Our second cohort is happening this semester, right? I mean, September. Our second cohort starts, we will have all K3 ELA teachers in the letters program with the exception of three. Two of them are in their master's program, and so they were like taking five classes to try to get finished. So they did not sign up for the letters. So, but all of our K3 will be letter certified, which goes along with the state mandate that's coming down from, well, from the state about having to do dyslexia training and those things. So that will be good. We also have implemented MAP fluency. This year, we're still learning about that. Our kids are in the middle of testing that still right now. I think we have about a grade and a half left to test. And that should allow us to see more pinpoint where they need in those foundational skills and or fluency skills. It'll tell us, like, they're missing this part of the phonics. This is where you need to help them. So therefore, that will increase their fluency rate and comprehension. So we're very excited about seeing where that's gonna take us this year. We also, at the, towards the end of last year, we put a plan in to provide all our grades with more small group reading time. And so we kept that in for this year as well. So there's more, as much as individualized or smaller group instruction going on that they need at their table instead of all groups. We also have the extended, extended learning time built in still to all grades, or, I'm sorry, K2, to give a little bit more time on things that they see in the classroom that are needed. And the upper grades, again, we are doing the MAP fluency with them as well to try to pinpoint their weaknesses, to see what they need help on, so we can build their fluency and comprehension. Fourth and fifth grade, we have two teachers in fourth grade and two ELA teachers in fifth grade that are participating in growing readers. We did that a few years ago with our K3. We had a K3 cohort. It is a two-year process. And they just recently opened up for fourth and fifth grade. So actually, Ms. Ricker and the teachers were there yesterday and started talking about it. So we hope that that makes an impact, pulling strategy groups. Another thing that we think that, because our third grade ELA data was really, really good, and a lot of teachers use the ReadWorks. So we, I'm working with someone right now to try to set up some training with ReadWorks so our teachers know more about that, and it's more user-friendly for them. So that's being implemented. In math, fifth grade did year, do Eureka Square last year. They kind of piloted. But this year, we did provide, because we all moved to Eureka Square this year, K5. Matt Thompson came in, what, three days? Two and a half, two and a half days, he came and helped our teachers. It was two teachers from each grade level, so they have to redeliver their PLCs, and we have documentation of when they deliver, what they're doing. Ms. Ricker kind of sends out, okay, deliver this piece at this PLC, and then at this PLC, deliver these things that you have to do. So I think that's gonna help with the lessons. Eureka Square also combined some lessons together. So there's less lessons throughout the year, so that allows more time for remediation. So I think that's gonna be helpful as well. The focus for Eureka Square also moved from what strategy to use to more, let's get the right answer. So I think that's gonna help our kids too with the milestone, because some of the Eureka ways are not necessarily the way that the milestone has to be tested. So instead of like saying, okay, you have to use the arrow way, they can just, if they can do it the standard way, they can do it the standard way. So I think that's gonna be beneficial as well. There's also a digital platform in Eureka that provides slides, videos, it has more practice, like online practice, so they're more familiar with how to do the math, like the drag and drops and things that they have to do, the fraction bars, all that. So I think that's gonna be good practice for the milestone as well. They also provide an assessment A and a B now. That way, if they don't do well, then they can, they have a, a backup assessment to reassess after they reteach. They can also edit these assessments, so if they notice that all the kids were really weak in one standard, then they can only retest on that one standard instead of having to do the whole testing. So I think that is going to be good. Last year, we started, because math standards are new for us this year, the new standards rolled out this year. So last year, we worked with a RISA consultant, and we, we dove in and did like a crosswalk in a comparison of what stayed, what changed, what you need to make sure you, like, make up. There's always like a gap year because kids are gonna miss it, like something that is now taught in kindergarten wasn't taught last year. So the first graders won't have it. So we had to talk about how are we gonna make that up so they, they get that standard. And then Ms. Ricker, myself, Ms. Gandhi, and Ms. Gordon also wrote a math grant, and we received a math grant. So we were able to buy some manipulatives or math manipulatives or teachers needed. And we also did another manipulative order that went along with some of the items that Eureka Square now said we needed. So we were able to purchase those too, so our kids have more hands-on learning.
And I got, I got some pictures today from teachers using them, and they were like, where were these my whole life?
Going back to the Eureka Square real fast too, the, the training we have with Matt Thompson, he shared, he gave us access to a lot of resources that he had created for Eureka Square. And they have tons of like videos for the, because sometimes the standards, like with Eureka Square, they might not be covered with the new standards that are coming out. So he's given us a, a list of, he created activities and sites, and this is what you use to teach this. This is where you can pull to teach this. A lot of, like, openers, like what doesn't belong, what's different between these slides for math is very, very cool. So he gave us a lot of resources.
He gave them the, like, so the, the standard that Mike should have, would have been taught in first grade, but now it's in second grade or whatever. He put that over on the side for the teacher's resources, and then how and where they could put it into the Eureka, like, it's literally laid out.
Very good.
All right, so that's the end of our presentation. Y'all have any questions? Well, if not, I would, and like I always say, we are the Todd Grant Tigers, and you're gonna hear us roar.
Ms. Rawls, I'm real surprised they didn't make you like go up here and do that presentation. Yeah, they, oh, they wanted to, okay. And she said no?
We're not finished yet.
You did a good job.
All right, good evening, everybody. So I knew you might have seen some of the GMASS scores already, so we'll try to be brief in our summations and focus more upon the, the domain improvements. So the main point of this presentation is for domain analysis and how we're gonna improve those specific domains for each of our content areas. We have nine tested subjects at McIntosh County Middle, eight in the grade tests, and one in the course test. So what we decided to do, I'm a big believer in norm referencing, and all these domains aren't necessarily created equal. Some of them are inherently more difficult than others for students to digest and comprehend. So just because we did perform well on a single domain, doesn't mean that there's not another domain where there's more fruit, low hanging fruit, more gains to be had. So comparing those to RISA and state averages for those same domains is where I think we're gonna get the biggest bang for our buck, and that's exactly what we did. So we checked out the domain performance and went to the teachers, whether it's low and some growths. We looked at their best domain, and then we looked at one or two of their lagging domains and said, do you have any ideas for improvement upon these? Now, we also came with our own ideas, but after we spoke with them, we introduced some of ours and allowed them to choose some that they thought they can implement in the classroom to help boost that performance. Of course, we plan to implement those this year, and we inspect what we expect. We're gonna meet with them a couple of different times periodically throughout the year to make sure that we're following up and make sure those domains are needing more. So as we're looking at the slides with the domain performance, the values in parentheses, they're gonna represent the RISA average and the state average in comparison to our own. So if you see a plus sign, that means we scored better than the RISA or the state. If you see a minus, we were lagging behind the RISA or the state.
Okay, so the first thing we're gonna look at is English Language Arts for our sixth graders. And we have a four-year comparison, so we have 19, 21, 22, and 23. You can notice our bars go up and down, but 23 is the tealish color bar. We did have a few more beginning, beginners, but we did have more students tested this past year. But we can say that our level threes, our proficiency, really went from, I mean, from 28 to 33% is huge. So, and then we had five go into distinguished, so we were definitely moving in the right direction. We did notice that our, our developing went down, but we gained those in proficiency. And so that's what we're kind of wanting to do, we're wanting to move to the right. So we did have a few go up, but we did have more students. We did RISA on level twos and up, and RISA's threes and fours. We did beat RISA on those. But we have work to do, and we're gonna do it. So in sixth grade, our, our glows were kind of the language, I mean, I'm sorry, their glows were the ones in white, where we beat RISA by five. We were a little behind in state and writing, but beating RISA by five, that's huge. When we were like, at one time, MCMS was at number 22 out of 25 RISA schools. So we've really made lots of gains. Reading and vocabulary, we were three, we beat RISA by three. Key ideas and details, we beat RISA by four. Reading literary texts, we beat RISA by five. Reading informational texts, we beat RISA by two. But the big one was that craft and structure, where we beat RISA by eight and state by two. So that was really good, where our students really excelled. But the ones we really wanna look at is that language standard, because we were behind state six by six. So that language and that vocabulary and acquisition, that usage, we were behind RISA three and behind state in seven. So those are the two that we went to the ELA and Language Arts teachers and said, what are we gonna do to help in those two domains to get the most bang for our buck? So we said, what are we gonna do? Daily oral language, just three times a week, not every day, we're gonna hit those, those grammar usage standards, but not, nothing that's going to be regimented, taking 20 to 30 minutes out of a class. We're talking about a quick hit. Grammar and mechanics within the writing pieces, peer editing and feedback, which goes along with our visible learning, where students are actually peer editing and giving feedback. And then digital tools and resources, and then how we plan to address vocabulary. We have word study bell ringers. So we've seen over the course of lots of teachers that have had great success. When they start with a bell ringer with something that grabs their attention, it gets their class off quickly in a transition where everyone's on task. Makes a huge difference. Contextual learning, root words, prefixes and suffixes, we kind of say, go back old school. It never hurts. Word of the day on our announcements, and then vocabulary quizzes and games. The students in middle school love games. So anything to get them interested, so we can do that as an opening exercise, or we can do that as a summarizer at the end of a class period. Anything to engage them at the beginning and then catch them again at the end. So our seventh grade ELA, notice that our proficiency was at a 39% and for distinguished, we're at 5%. State and RISA, we beat by threes and fours, and then state and RISA two and up. Notice that our beginning learners were the lowest that they had ever been for the past four years. We made great strides in EL, in seventh grade last year in ELA and math. Those teachers were really on it all year long. So we look at their, their glows, their writing beat the state by 11 and by RISA by 18. So we were trying to find relative, relative weaknesses. But our language, our reading, vocabulary, key ideas and details, they did so well in all of those areas in seventh grade. Vocabulary acquisition and use, again, beat RISA by seven and state by four. Reading informational texts beat RISA by seven and state by three. Reading literary text is one of our relative weaknesses, even though they beat RISA by five, we tied state. We noticed that because we use ACHIE3000, and the students are reading nonfiction texts so often during their school day, that they are much, much better at reading informational texts now than reading just good old-fashioned books like we're used to, like old school. So that's one of the weaknesses, is reading, just reading books, reading full-length books. Lots of students have excerpts, and teachers will use three chapters of this or three chapters of this, but never a book from start to finish. And so that's one of the things that they're really doing now, incorporating full literary text in there. And then craft and structure, integration of knowledge and ideas, that was a relative weakness for us because we did not, we were behind in state by one. So some of the ways we were going to do better.
We'd be remiss if we didn't give Ms. Cindy Gerald a shout-out on this one. If you look at that, there's only one percentage point where she didn't beat RISA or state.
And we've told her that. Yeah, and we've told her that every time she's come and she's sub for us three times already.
Does she wanna come back forty-nine percent?
So she's already come in meetings and we've already told her. Um does she wanna come back? Analyzing text structure, paired passages give us a lot of bang for our buck. Plot and conflict and then literary terms and vocabulary. All of those things will help um craft and structure the bank. And then for reading literary texts, doing close reads, actually doing those strategies with close reading. Um annotating, our seventh and eighth grade ELA teachers are really um structured into annotating. So in this, as the students read, the students are writing. The teachers read, the students are writing. They read together, the students are writing. So they're really annotating their work. Plot, structure analysis, and then the Socratic seminars where uh it engages the students to have guided discussions about their own reading and writing. So it teaches them um how to um have a discussion about what they're reading. Our eighth grade ELA, our um our percentage bar stayed pretty similar to how they were in twenty twenty-two. Um our, of course, our developing, proficient and distinguished. It hit above that seventy mark and that is that's passing as far as the state is concerned. Of course, we want it to be threes and fours. That's what our game is. Um state and RISA, we were up, twos and up, and then we tied RISA for threes and fours. But our ultimate goal, of course, is to move everything out of twos and threes and move them into that four category. So their um kind of their grows were their language. They beat um RISA by nine and state by four. And then some um craft and structure, they beat um RISA by six. Beat state by two. Reading informational texts, they actually were five and one. And we were a little worried about our eighth graders last year as far as informational texts, but they seemed to pull through when it came to test time. Their weaknesses again were those key ideas and details where they were behind RISA by four and behind state by seven. And then that reading literary text again, reading those those novels, reading that that fiction. Um behind RISA two and behind state six. And our um ideas is annotate. Ms. Pascal, if you've ever had the pleasure of seeing her teach, she's a huge annotator and she teaches it from day one. Um textual evidence, finding that evidence in that text. Uh plans to address reading literary texts is focus on literary elements within the text. Um those are just some of the books that they're reading right now and the short stories here in High Four Fifty-One. Call of the Wild, Shiloh Season, Animal Farm, various short stories. Guided reading questions as the students are reading, we're giving them those guided reading questions to keep them going. And then paired passages or comparative comparative analysis where they're assigned texts with similar themes. And then they go in and guide the students on how to compare um different authors' points of view. Now we're moving to math. So you'll notice um we did have a little bit of increase in level one with um our sixth grade. But our um our other bars stayed relatively similar to how they were in the past. Um but the amount of growth sixth grade has is always phenomenal. So the growth scores go up exponentially when we're talking about sixth grade math. We did have more students test last year. That was a big sixth grade group last year. But we did bust out the three distinguished. Mr. Ross's son is one of those, so I'm gonna give him a little shout out. He was also distinguished in ELA also, so I'm gonna give him a shout out. So um if we're looking at um passing, we're looking at over a seventy percent passing. If you're looking at two, threes and fours, then our ultimate goal again is to be three and fours. Um our weaknesses are ratios and proportional relationships in sixth grade math and statistics and probability. Statistics and probability is taught near the end of the um session. Uh expressions and equations, Jo Yvind was ecstatic when she saw that she beat RISA by ten and state by six. Because that's really hard for sixth grade. Um the number system, equations and um expressions, that's the majority of that sixth grade test. So she beat state by six and um RISA by six and state by four. So the two, you know, the two weaknesses we have are ratios and proportional relationships and the statistical, so sta- statistics and probability. And our plans for that are um concrete examples, visual aids, real world applications. Ms. Boone has the pleasure of also having a student teacher. So that only adds to some of those great activities that student teachers can bring into a classroom. Um she had her first observation yesterday and everything looked great. So she's using a lot of visual aids and real world applications um in her student teaching. And this student teacher will live with us all year long. And then for statistics and probability, um probability games, data collection projects and increasing the frequency of a spiral review. So um Ms. Boone has always done like a big four, but increasing the frequency, focusing on GMASS review and and constantly doing it where it's um second nature.
We're big believers in a spiral review whenever it comes to math. If they just learn that concept within a couple of months window, they don't see it again until the GMASS, they've likely forgotten it. If they get that distributed amongst the school year, it's gonna soar.
Okay, so seventh grade math was kind of our shining star this year as far as um the subject that pretty much knocked it out of the park. So we had um we had the lowest number of beginning learners we've ever had. We had forty-four number twos and thirty-seven number threes. Um if you look at the years prior, fifty-five and fifty-fours. Um notice like in nineteen and twenty-one, we only had fifteen and fourteen students um score a proficient. Thirty-seven scored proficient last year and then five were distinguished. So um he, uh Mr. Heck's classes beat recent and state in almost every category.
And beat the state in threes and fours by five percentage points, which is big.
So we're looking at ratios and proportional relationships. That seems to be a little bit of a trend. And then.
The geometry's really good there.
Geometry was really good there. So I think it is, we're learning it in sixth grade and by the time we get to seventh grade, they really got it.
Well, in seventh grade too, they can start thinking more abstractly than they do in seventh grade.
So ratios and proportional relationships is our weakness. Um we did, we we um RISA by four and lost to state by seven. And I say relatively, I mean, I think we did great job. And then geometry was our shining star comparatively to everything else. What are we gonna do to address that ratio proportional relationship? Just time on content, uh make setting up ratios a more frequent part of a warm up. Concrete examples, multiple representations and then error analysis. Just um really hands on things that keep them coming around where it's not just at the end of the um right there before GMASS.
And Mr. Heck said for this one, since the standards changed, there are a few things that he's not gonna harp so much on this year because they're not gonna be tested, not in the standards anymore. And that's gonna let him have more time to work um with that proportional relationship domain.
And then with our eighth grade, we have um we we beat state and RISA for twos and ups. Um uh Ms. Fannick was a little disappointed in her level twos, but her threes and fours. Um of course, she's proud of the twos, threes and fours because the state considered those passing. But we would like to see that travel more to the right. Um we're, uh our beginning level learners are going down tremendously. So that is a big step in in notice from the year before, thirty-five down to twenty-four for beginning learners. And that did not include, did that include the seven from six for summer school? That were beginning that moved.
I believe, yeah, I believe this do include the summer school numbers.
So those were, those did include, because we did have six or seven of our summer school students did come back and um pass math for the state. And then um the lowest areas, algebra and functions and geometry again. So it moved back for geometry, but statistics and probability were a relative strength. So how are we gonna address algebra and functions and geometry? Um for algebra and functions, interactive activities and the real world applications for math, they just have to have hands on and just have to do, they have to practice. They have to do those problems. They have to do those scenarios. And then increase in frequency on spiral review. So as closer the test came, sometimes the spiral review would get left out and we felt like we gotta teach that new content. And um we didn't go back around and keep reviewing. And then for geometry, to increase the focus on quadratic content, increase the frequency of a spiral review. And um many of the standards previously housed in this domain are no longer applicable. So this, they won't see a lot of this on the next, on the next test. And we won't have next year's test back until um the end of August, September. They're not even gonna have a cut score until then because they, all the standards changed. So um.
It's gonna take them longer to decide what they're gonna let scorp e.
Right, and they said that it would probably be mid-August to early September before they even decided on a cut score. So next year, we won't get math scores back until after school has already started.
If you're wondering why we did so well in geometry in seventh grade and not in eighth grade, Ms. Fannick attributed it to quadratics content. That's something you don't see in seventh grade. It's much more complicated than the seventh grade geometry. And she said they just really have a tough time with that. And so harping on that this year is gonna be part of our focus. Alright, uh for science, this is another one of our shining stars. Our current academic coach now, Mrs. Amanda Deverger, she taught this one. And we beat the state and RISA for threes and fours and the state and RISA for twos and ups. And beat it quite handily. Looking at threes and fours, our average was thirty-four percent and then the state average was twenty-six percent. So she crushed it. In domain performance, uh we were looking for some relative weaknesses on this one as she did not lose to the recent or the state in a single domain. Um but in motion, she tied both the RISA and the state. So we're taking that as our relative weakness to see where we can work. Our plan is to address that motion domain. So she's got some uh specific ideas, like walking various tracks to physically experience the constant speed and acceleration. So the kids move, they feel, um and learn kinesthetically. And using simulations in which they can manipulate objects mass, object speed to see the difference in the physical science classroom. And then hands on experiences, uh labs and in this one, dump trucks of various masses to help investigate massive motion. Alright, uh Georgia Studies, really the lagger if if you're talking about performance in our uh different content areas. But even so, uh they did tie the state and then RISA for levels twos and up. So if you if you go back and look at this presentation, I don't think there's a single um content where we uh as far as integrated tests, where we didn't at least tie or beat RISA for pass rates. Alright, um this one did lag quite behind in a couple of categories. They did better on history and geography and the other two, and those are large components of the test. But lagged well behind in government and civics and then economics. So what are we gonna do to address these standards? For our government and civics, uh met with Ms. Jenkins this morning and we viewed some released test items to see exactly what they are asking in that category. We gotta know where where we're headed to see what we need to teach. Um we're gonna increase our emphasis on civics literacy and historical content. And then for our economics domain, again, viewing those released test items so we can see what they're expecting. And then she's gonna expand on this unit and increase her focus on economic vocabulary so the kids know those terms whenever they go into the test. And on this one, we're gonna create a spiral review so she distributes that information throughout the course of the year.
And I will tell you, last year she did economics closer to the beginning of the school year because that was one of the ones that the year before she didn't get to. And so she tried to incorporate economics in early and she did say she felt like she didn't review it again. You know, it was one of those one and done things because she was trying to get content home. So um that spiral review will help that.
And this is our lone end of course test, our algebra uh with our eighth grade students. You can see we had a little bit of an increase in percentage of level fours, uh but did drop pretty significantly in our level threes. With the domain performance, looking at expressions and equations, those were our top domain performers. And on this one, uh we weren't able to get the state comparisons for the domain. So what we did was you look at the percentages, or actually, I'm sorry, the number of students on these for for remediate, monitor and then accelerate learning. And so we had the most students um that did better on expressions and equations. And we performed most poorly on functions and then connections to stats and probability. What are we gonna do to increase those? Again, focus on quadratics, increase emphasis on that, uh include some spiral review and then honing in on information that's actually gonna be tested, those priority standards. Uh we also talked about the additional support course for Algebra One. Adding that in for second semester, the so those students will have a connection course immediately before their Algebra One course to get a bigger block of time. Our plan to address connections um to stats and probability. Expand that unit, a portion of the course, so better pacing there. Um some more project based assessments and again, that additional support course, extra time and seats will help.
But even with our level threes going down, our level twos are passing by the state in seventies. So um fourteen percent didn't pass, but eighty-six percent did. So that's a game.
Yeah, overall, a great administration. I think we either tied or beat our our best averages for seven out of the nine tests that we took last year. So we were, we were pleased with that.
Alright, thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but certainly not least.
Go Bucks.
We are.
Put a little R into it.
I can't, I can't do like you can, Mr. Willis.
They let you alone up here tonight, Mr. Willis. You don't have any backup. They got you by yourself.
It's alright. I I am one buck.
One buck.
You are.
You are.
Oh, good. You are it. Yeah, good evening, everyone. We're gonna, uh we, I'm gonna present our uh our milestone summaries and uh some glows and grows and uh and what we plan to do about it and why. So um. Oh, I got a ticker. I'm sorry, going, hey. Look, look.
You had some backup.
I gave, I told you. But looking, we test four uh subjects, uh American Lit, US History, uh Algebra One and Biology. Uh we um, you know, looking at American literature and and it it's interesting uh highly to hear Todd Grant and the middle school. You know, there's themes throughout uh all three schools, uh both positive and negative. I mean, it's uh, you know, glows and groves. Uh and uh and it's encouraging to see that we're also doing a lot of the same work. I mean, and it's good work. Uh so um, you know, that's uh, I loved hearing y'all's presentations, uh private mine, which I, you know, I didn't wanna go first. But I am glad uh to hear what y'all had to present. So um it's it's good. Uh our American Lit scores, uh looking at the last four years, uh with the threes and fours. Um you know, and I'm gonna uh say what Ms. Hewlett said quite a few times is, you know, um you know, the the threes and fours is where we're heading. You know, that's where we wanna be. Uh state of Georgia says that a seventy is passing and for some reason on the cut scores, a seventy is a two. Um so uh so as we push, we we too are looking to move the scores from the left to the right. You know, from the ones up through the fours, uh and that's happening. But uh there's our scores with threes and fours and I I know that's been presented already. Uh but here you look at American Lit twos to fours and i- it's almost a straight line across, uh very similar to state and RISA uh with our scores there. So those are moving to the right. Um and we look to move more twos to threes and threes to fours uh this year. And our ones are going down. That's uh which is always the goal. Uh one thing, uh last year I stood here and gave this presentation to y'all. Uh and I presented that in many of these subjects that we test and end of course test that none of our special education students had passed those tests. Uh and we uh with with a a true focus on our special needs kids, um you know, you look here uh over the past four years at beginning, developing and proficient. Uh this past year, uh we had five of our special needs kids uh score developing, uh passing with a seventy or above and uh and one that was proficient. Uh so you know, we're moving the needle for those students as well because as that needle moves, the whole school moves. Um absolutely. Um our American Lit, as far as what we identified as needing remediation of the domains, uh the the top two were reading and vocabulary and and informational reading. Uh you know, just reading uh for our students, uh they read, but they don't necessarily always like to read informational texts like a science textbook or a history textbook or, you know, things that are informational. Um so those are things that definitely we're working on. Uh the reading status from uh that, seventy percent of reading grade level or above, uh but that that's a reading level. It's not necessarily the informational reading level and uh most all of the questions are about the information they're supposed to have learned. Um our action plan for ELA, the glows, uh you know, students are passing seventy plus as I stated, but the grow is our threes and But the grow is our threes and fours aren't where we want them, but we're moving in that direction. Seventy percent of our eleventh graders are reading it, are above grade level, and our special ed students are slowing, showing slight increases. And they will continue. On the grows, reading and vocabulary is our weakest areas on the EOC. We've identified that in all four of our areas, that vocabulary is an issue that we are addressing in many different ways. We're gonna implement strategies, oh, it's a grow. We need to implement strategies to expand students' vocabulary, enhancing their ability to understand complex text. It was, you know, it's very telling when they may know the information, but they don't, they can't identify that one word that makes or breaks the question. So really digging into that. Our plan of action for ELA, students across content areas will focus on reading strategies. It's reading across the curriculum. It's not just, the English teacher's not just responsible for teaching reading. Or to reinforce reading and writing, it's in all subject areas. Going back on what we've already heard tonight, you know, annotation is big, summary writing, context clues. I mean, all the things that are going on in the other two schools, we're addressing as well to make sure that those are strengthened. Our special education students take a basic read-write course prior to taking EOC. It's the equivalent of a support class. So that they're, learning vocabulary and confidence for all students is important on these, you know, to score on these tests and to learn, I mean, just to achieve. But that especially stands out with a lot of our special needs students. So to improve vocabulary and confidence by going through a support class prior to being in the language arts class is making a huge difference. Expose students to more informational text. My path is really incredible. The more I, you know, look into it, read it, research it, and look to implement it this year, which we are. They begin in ninth grade, it's connected to the map testing that all of our kids do. And it immediately can put them where they are and where they need to remediate. And it addresses individual learning differences better than anything I've seen as far as a supplement to the instruction. And also, we're this year in addressing our rows, our needs. Our ninth and tenth grade teachers are gonna give write score as a final exam. And the reason being, the eighth grade takes the English integrate, you know, as part of their integrated test. And our students are not tested on a state standardized test in English until eleventh grade. So giving them that urgency, but also preparing them for that and giving them the confidence and the tools needed that by the time they get to eleventh grade, they can be more successful. I had no idea my voice was gonna go tonight, I'm sorry. But Algebra I, this is our, this is our area of need. Again, the threes and fours are there. The, we lag behind the state and RISA with that. Again, though, you look at the twos and fours, it's almost a straight line except for, you know, we're still behind and we are doing some things about that that we're excited about. Here is our special education, just looking at those numbers again for Algebra I, EOC. You look, again, the numbers, we did have some that, we had three that were developing this past year and one that was proficient. Our remediation needs functions, I've seen that already tonight, and it continues to, you know, to be something we are looking into helping with and equations. Our glows for math, our special education students are slightly improving again. The integration of technology into lessons has increased student engagement and interest in math. And again, it's not replacing the teacher, the teacher's teaching her heart out. But they, and doing a great job, but to raise student engagement and interest to do the work is helping. IXL has been a huge plus because it helps support kids where they are with their, what they know and don't know and differentiate instruction. And students consistently attend after remediation. Our two-thirty to three-thirty tutoring time, there's kids in most of these subjects, but math continuously is our high attendance zone there with all three math teachers. You know, kids take advantage of that and they come in and they're being more successful. Grows, there's just, there's a need to focus on improving students' basic math skills. Some students still struggle with math anxiety, it's very real. And strategies to reduce are being explored. I mean, it's, you know, given of that confidence again, that it's okay, they can do it. And they have the tools to do it through classroom. Explicitly teach the connection between math and real-world applications to help students see the practical value. You know, again, I said it when I was in high school and these kids still say it. I don't know that I've ever used algebra, but I have. You know, why do we need to do this? And I have used algebra, just not in ways that I learned in the classroom. And it's important for them to do that. Use data to identify students who are consistently scoring higher on assessments and push those students into more challenging work. So, you know, and that's moving threes to fours. That's moving threes to fours. A lot of times in education, we support the bottom, but we don't push the top. You know, that middle eighty percent's where we're at, you know, those are your kids that, you know, come to school, do their work, you know, stay out of trouble. You know, but academically, we spend a lot of time and resources on pushing the bottom. We're now, you know, moving to push the top as well. Our plan of action, this is the big one that we're real excited about. This year, we did flip geometry and Algebra I between grade levels. Historically, Algebra I is taken by ninth graders and geometry in tenth grade. We have flipped, and now our ninth graders are taking geometry. And these ninth graders that are in geometry this year will then move on to take Algebra I in tenth grade. Lots of data was looked at as to why that would be beneficial. They, the ninth graders are more concrete in their thinking. Dr. Williams talked about, you know, being able to think more abstractly, and Algebra I's abstract. Geometry's more concrete, you know, so the maturity of the kids and their learning readiness was a big reason for that. Also, there's geometry, there's algebra standards in the geometry standards. So the teacher, Ms. Stutler, is going to be able to teach the geometry standards, including the algebra standards, to then prep her kids to then roll into tenth grade. Our students that are not in the honors class, but the on-level algebra students next year will be in an algebra support class and an Algebra I class. They will take the EOC in May at that point. So flipping that with the understanding of where they are with their maturity and knowing the things that they need, we look forward to big things. I think two years from now, God, you know, that's scary. But two years from now, we're gonna be talking about how this worked out. Well, maybe, it'll be good, I know. But, you know, we won't be talking about that much, I promise. Implement My Path to remediate students who are struggling, again, My Path is pretty revolutionary. And this is just an example that came up in our POC. Art classes, you know, going across curriculum, how can other classes help? You know, they're gonna start talking about teaching functions through art with drawing lines and that type thing, so. Uh-oh. Rusty?
Rusty.
Oh, never mind. Thanks, just kidding. Just kidding. I mean, we commit, no, I'm just kidding. Biology, getting threes and fours, we're below RISA and state. But again, our, you know, you look across the board at this past year, and it's almost a dead even with both as twos, threes, and fours. Especially in comparison, we didn't have any distinguishes past year, but we did push six of our special needs students into the developing range after not many passing at all. Remediation needed in biology, theory of evolution and cellular genetics and heredity. And I've heard from biology teachers for years that it's always about the cells, you know, it's cell, cell, cells. And that's cellular genetics, it's still true here, or at least on the last administration. The action plan, the glows, scores are consistently near the state and recent percentages. The grows, we need to push them into the threes and fours. Illuminate assessments are aligned with the rigor of the EOC and are being administered. So we're using the illuminate tool on major summative assessments to raise the rigor of what they're learning. Students consistently attend after-school remediation, biology is a close second. It was for Ms. Barnhill last year, and now already with Mr. Harland, kids are there. And he's providing those services. Biology offers hands-on engaging activities, you know, it's cool, you get to do a lot of labs to go along with the learning. Grows, improving student vocabulary, there's vocabulary again through the instruction of prefix, suffix, and root words. I mean, just today, I was in biology class and he was doing just that with different types of plant life. And kids were digging into that and very engaged with it. Expose students to informational text. Implement more frequent formative assessments to catch struggling students before the summative assessments and reteach the concepts. So there's that spiraling as well that Mr. Brooker was mentioning. Plan of action, ELA teachers are gonna start providing some science-based informational text. The informational text piece, especially for science, for whatever reason, tends to create some problems. And they're gonna teach annotation strategies for reading complex text, you know. So it's that reading across curriculum, writing across the curriculum so that students, they get the, you know, they become better learners. Ninth grade environmental science, they don't test till tenth grade in biology, so the ninth grade teacher's gonna introduce the cellular genetics, well, our domains of need that were recognized as needs improvement to increase their understanding of these as well. So they can supplement that, getting, moving them from ninth grade into tenth grade. It's not gonna be the first time they've heard it in tenth grade. Evaluate the curriculum map to ensure all the standards are being covered. This is huge, I preach this all the time, and teachers are doing a good job. But, you know, I can tell you, as an old history teacher, I ended US History in nineteen forty-five way too many times. And my teaching career was in the nineties, early two thousands. You know, and kids will say, what about Vietnam? Ah, you know, just, you'll get that. But we don't live in that world anymore, nor should we. I mean, I'm not saying I did a great job, I'm not proud of that, but I, it's true. But making sure that all the standards are covered so that, you know, you, I have favorite parts of what I taught too. I loved World War II, but, you know, so I spent eight weeks on it. That's not what we do anymore, nor should. So, but making sure everything's covered with fidelity and they don't run out of time is huge. US History, again, threes and fours, you've seen those. Not behind state and RISA with those, but twos almost straight across the same. So the push has been on for the seventy or above, and now we go to the seventy-three or above, which is the threes, which can be a difference in one or two questions, and we're gonna get it. Sped comparison, US History, again, you know, that's a huge gain as far as, and these are the number of kids for special ed and not percentages. But you look at, he had four with one distinguished. So, you know, that work is very positive. The remediation area is a colonization through the Constitution. And again, before I get to the remediation piece, this is given in the eleventh grade, so they don't see a lot of this on a test, they're not tested in three years. They're tested in eighth grade in social studies and history, and then they go to the eleventh grade. Colonization happened at the first of the semester. That's covered a lot in World History, but we're gonna, we're working on that. And then post-World War II to the present, well, I'm not saying that's happening at MCA, but it happens. And we're making those moves to make sure they're prepared for those. Grows, EOC scores for students passing two to four consistent with recent state. We wanna get the threes and fours up, though. Special ed students are showing significant increase in passing the EOC in our US History, that's a true glow. The curriculum is rich in historical content, I mean, the kids love it. They, you know, and the teacher, Coach Rosenbaum, is a very engaging teacher. And students have access to a variety of historical resources. He uses tons of primary documents and multimedia with the political cartoons and those type things. The grows, evaluate the illuminate assessments, again, the rigor's gotta be there. It makes the students and teachers sometimes uncomfortable because these tests are hard, but it's raising the rigor to then prepare them to take a rigorous end-of-course test. And we're getting, we're improving on that. Adjust the curriculum map, he's gotta teach them all. And use the illuminate reports to then tailor the instruction to what they need to spiral. The plan of action is, again, reading across the curriculum. World History, which is taught in ninth grade, is gonna make a connection to US History. Many of their standards with things like exploration, colonization are the exact same standards as in US History. So there's gonna be a better emphasis put on that. Vocabulary again, and, you know, those political cartoons, we're gonna expand those across the curriculum as well. Those tend to, you can, a lot of our kids can translate or interpret, is a better word, political cartoons from current times because it's relative. It's things that are going on in the world right now in their world. But to go back and look at one from the Revolutionary War, the Civil Rights Movement or something, you know, the how to read those, I think, is the key instead of the material it's about. Oh, that's it? Do y'all have any questions?
Thank you.
Compliments, I have one question, Mr. Willis. Regarding the bar graphs, they look great. They've got sort of a, it just looks kinda like an Auburn-type presentation. Dark blue and the orange, I was worried that there was a conscious effort.
You know I would never do that.
My compliments on your vest.
Thank you. It's an MCA.
I was just saying, that's an MCA.
I understand.
I'd say go dogs itself, one game of the year.
There you go, there you go.
All right.
Same way with all.
Yeah, thank you, Principal.
I wanna say this, and then, I guess, 'cause I see the same thing on all the schools too. You know, I truly believe, and I know you all agree to this, is literacy is so important. 'Cause I notice on all of them but math, because with those word problems and different stuff, kids gonna always, if they have a problem with literacy, they're gonna have a problem with it. And I see that, you know, 'cause I was just at the high school earlier today, and that was some of the discussion we had, is making sure that literacy part of reading and understanding is in there to make sure these kids, 'cause math and science and all that gonna affect them all the way across.
Thank y'all, if y'all want to be excused, you're welcome to be.
But if y'all wanna stay.
Whatever you want to.
Don't run.
Thank you.
Knock each other down, getting out the doorway.
Almost like we said recess.
Yeah.
Great job, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Did you turn it off?
No.
What happened?
That was what I said. I probably did.
Oh, it went out.
Dark blue and orange bars, you knew that was intentional.
Never mind.
It just timed out.
The more I looked at it.
My clip board.
Okay.
I will move this way, how about that?
We'll move on to Ms. Tammy with our financial reports.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
31st, 2023 financial report, if you return to page two. The general operating account is at one point one million. We have receipts of two point seven million, which did include a transfer from the money market account of a million. And it also includes the transfer from the Georgia one fund, Georgia Fund One account for the energy raise of five hundred and eighty-two thousand. And we had disbursements of two point three million, leaving us with one point four million, one point four nine million in the general operating account. Onto general fund revenues and expenses, page twenty-nine, with the school year sixteen point six percent complete. We had four hundred and fifty-three thousand of general fund revenues, which is two point five percent of the budgeted seventeen point eight million in general fund revenues. Again, we are continuing to accrue taxes and state revenues. So come September first, we'll start seeing the revenues come in for the fiscal twenty-three. Onto expenditures, page thirty-one, we've had period-to-date expenditures of one point four million, which is seven point five nine percent of the budgeted eighteen point four million in general fund expenditures. Changes in fund equity, page thirty-five. The current fund balance at the end of August is at two point nine million. There are no questions over anything on the general fund. And we launch to school nutrition, page one hundred and eleven. Currently, the balance in the school nutrition account is three hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. And page one hundred and eighteen, the school nutrition fund balance is at two hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars. Money market account, page one twenty-two, we began the month with just over three million. We had interest for the month of August of four thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars, the transfer out to the general operating account of a million dollars, leaving us with just over two million, thirty-one thousand in the money market accounts. Lots of local projects, page one twenty-four, began the month with, uh, just over two million, forty-two thousand. Uh, we, we seek our final GSFIC payment for the middle school project from the state of twenty thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars. We had expenditures of two hundred and three thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars, leaving us with one point eight five, just under one point eight-six million in the local projects account. Finally, debt service, the Georgia Fund One account, we began the month with just over three million. Uh, we had interest for the month of August of twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, and we had Eastwast receipts of one hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six. We transferred out five hundred and eighty-two thousand, uh, for the energy lease payment, leaving, uh, two point six million in the Georgia Fund One account. And I would like to point out that the August, uh, Eastwast receipt was fourteen point four percent more than August of last year.
All right.
So, we don't see a good growth in our Eastwast.
Awesome.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Are all projects done? The projects, are they?
They're not quite done. Projects are ongoing, because the, 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 uh, middle school project is done.
Okay, yeah, that's what I meant, middle school, I'm sorry.
Still racing Oak Grove and then, uh, the cultural projects.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tammy. All right, the discussion of our minutes, if you'll look over those and let Ms. Lane or Dr. Williams know if we need to make any changes. All right, number three, transfer of a million dollars.
Yes, just, uh, with the tax digest.
We don't have everything here.
So late, uh, the fund balance getting so low in the general fund, I just wanted to go ahead and get y'all's approval in case we need to move some money for that September payroll, because taxes probably won't be going in yet, and, you know, the federal breakups haven't started yet, so.
She's supposed to be safe.
It may not take the whole million, but, um, just to be safe.
Okay. All right, revision of our policy, DIB, our financial report.
That's Tammy as well, Tammy's on the podium.
You're busy.
So, there have been a couple of new GAZB pronouncements, uh, GAZB ninety-six and eighty-seven, they actually went into effect, um, in FY twenty-three. Department of Audits and the Department of, in DOE is recommending that we update our capitalization policy. What this, the big one was the GAZB ninety-six, which is capitalization, we now have to capitalize least, they call them Sabitas, it's least subscription-based technology software. And so, they wanted us to include verbage in our capitalization policy, um, if they have that. So, I tried to keep it as simple and basic as possible, they may come back and make me get a little more detailed in it, but, um, I, to start off, I just wanted to keep it basic.
Okay.
We have to scroll one down to the next slide. Yeah, the intangible way to use assets, GAZB eighty-seven and ninety-six, I added all of that terminology to the policy.
Okay. All right, if you'll read over that, and then next week we can vote to put that on the table for thirty days. All right, number five is our board policy for our student address code, and this has been on the table.
Our thirty days are up.
So, we'll.
So, next week, we can vote on that. Or you can vote on that.
All right, Mr. Mossa.
Great evening, board, it's a pleasure to be here. I wanna start off by saying, I was very impressed with our principals and our schools, it's not always easy to give the da- data down and dirty and then, um, come up with a plan for addressing it, and I think they did an outstanding job and, um, deserve a lot of, um, credit, and I look forward to seeing the results of that action plan that they put together. I liked what I heard, and, uh, I'm impressed. For, um, facilities, as a facilities update, we, um, have our tinting at the middle school that was completed. If you'll drive by the middle school cafeteria, you'll see that we've, um, put a one-way glass on all those, so now you can't see in as you drive by, you'll just see your car driving by. There, uh, the kids are still able to enjoy the beautiful outdoors from inside. We left the top, very top of the windows, um, open for, um, added light, so that's a great project. We finished up, I would say, ninety-nine point nine percent of every door has been security filmed, so, that, that, that project's done. And, um, on Monday of next week, I'm hoping to actually see the first of breaking ground for fixing up this side of Oak Grove, so that, that's, um, all in fact, we signed the contract today and sent them everything they need, and, um, one last little piece there, and hopefully Monday they'll start that project.
And thank you, Mr. Ryan, for looking over that for us yesterday.
As a little update on the storm, um, we, McIntosh County itself was blessed, we did have a lot of power outages around the county, and I think the Board of Education and Dr. Williams made a great choice to be closed the two days because our middle school didn't have power until probably two o'clock on the following day. Um, we were able to do the cleanup r- really well, and I wanna thank the city for addressing the drainage problem. The day before the storm, the water came up really fast, but it drained down really fast, and, um, we didn't have any issues with drainage throughout the storm, even though we didn't get a lot of rain, but it wa- it was a noticeable difference in the speed of withdrawal from that sudden rainstorm. It seemed like that Tuesday morning, it came down pretty hard, pretty quickly.
Oh, it was, yes.
And, um, we were, again, blessed, it cleared right out, and we were able to have school. So I think that we made good choices, and, um, the storm was a, I don't wanna say non-event, but it wasn't, um, any significant damage to the McIntosh County school system.
Cool.
And for our COVID, I, um, always will say that we only have, well, not always, but at this point, we only have one active COVID case in the county. Now, we've had some that have run their course, but as of right now, there's one person. Um, but I would be remiss without saying that we are still really focusing on our general health protocols, um, still washing our hands, being safe, and encouraging teachers that if they're sick and staff, that they're supposed to stay home until they're fever-free for twenty-four hours without medication. Um, that medication can fool a lot of people, and we're just encouraging that. So, I think that we're doing well, and we need to just keep down, stay the course on our COVID protocols and our general health protocols. Any questions?
I do have one question, and when you said securing the, the film on the doors made me think of something. Um, a while back, it, I think it was the middle school, we had an issue where the security latches were not, I guess, on all the doors, so if they were propped open for a certain amount of time, the alarm would go off, we have all that throughout the whole system now up and running.
Um, they're, they're sending emails, the principals of, um, a- a- as of my knowledge, that I know the middle school is a hundred percent running, Rusty?
The elementary school is a hundred percent up, and the high school being completely ready now. That was the, the, the projects of all that access control being done, and that project should be done by the end of next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, for go, um, area for quality workers, we don't have any for tonight, personnel?
All right, so, community engagement?
I'll talk about that next week.
All right, and do we need to go into executive session for anything? Nothing? Okay, all right. Leave us to the board comments.
Great, great meeting tonight, I really appreciate and enjoyed all of the presentations, excited about where we're at and where we're going.
Um, I don't have anything. Thank you.
What?
Save mine.
Mr. McCover, oh, gosh.
I'm good, I'm good.
Andy?
I'm good.
Richie? All right, I'm good too. All right, we're adjourned, next week, Thursday.